All the meeting to order on April twenty fifth, seven thirty two C M. Roll call. Dietson.
Does he can, yeah?
Dudek.
Yep.
Cooper.
Case.
Case. Hertzel. Absent.
Last name is Case, right?
That case, right.
And Hertzel's absent.
Are there any comments from the community that are not on the agenda?
Yes. I'm not on the agenda. Can you make a comment about the variance?
Okay, what's your name?
Chris Shinstra, S H I N S K A.
S H I N S K A, okay, go ahead.
Um, well, just by happenstance, I'm here. I was talking to Joe Augusta, who's a friend of mine at church, and and he mentioned something about the barn and that, yeah, it's it's too close and they need a variance and and I mean, right away, and I'm thinking that, uh, you know, it might be tore down. And so, I mean, I'm thinking, I mean, I was raised at, some know, skip, uh, those, uh, ten three twelve Golden Road, I lived in Columbus Township, almost my whole life, I live on Croner Road now. I'm green, uh, one of the greenhouses I bought thirty five years ago. And so barns are near and dear to my heart, my, uh, my dad's farm and my mom's farm that we sold after my mom passed away a few years ago. Um, I I just love old barns and the landscape of America has tearing these barns down too fast, because the barns will outlive us as long as they keep a roof on them and and the sideboards on, because those old barns will collapse from the side and, I mean, I happened to bring a couple, I mean, they're beautiful and to just tear a barn down, uh, to tear it because of, you know, it doesn't quite need a setback, I brought these pictures of my dad's barn, I mean, if, are you guys the Z P A? Is this why I should show these to?
Yeah, we're the Z P A.
Good, all right, great, I don't, I don't come to these, so, I mean, I brought these just to show, you know, um, what, you know, the beauty of of these old structures and that structure is just like my dad's barn. And I mean, uh, my daughter took these before we sold the house and, um, this way, I mean, and and I mean, these things are built like fortresses. They're beautiful. I mean, there's, I mean, and they can hold a hook up there. I mean, and like here, this was my dad's barn, which is not as good a shape with the barn near or that we're talking about there on thirty two. I mean, this is, it's still standing, it's still there, some nice people bought it and they have a hay of animals and chickens and what they haven't repaired it. Where, yeah, the roof's not bad, but they gotta repair these end boards or they end up collapsing from the inside, but I'm just saying, I hope we, uh, are not too quick, uh, because of, you know, something to tear down a structure like this and that will stand longer than any of us are going to be living here, as long as it's taken care of, so I would just, you know, I'm just asking, um, because the barns are dear to me and that you would, uh, trying to consider the variance that he's asking for.
You have his address? Dave? Dave?
Raised on one oh three one two Dolan Street.
Golden Road.
Now live on Nolan Road, right?
No, I live on Croner, one, one, three, four, five Croner Road. Right around the corner.
Okay, one zero three one two Dolan, right?
Yeah, ten three twelve, still remember.
Anyone else? We'll move on to the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
I seconded.
Okay.
Okay, so, hold on, hold on, hold on. Matt. To approve.
The opinions.
You need to.
Second. So it's ready by?
All in favor, say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Need. Opposed? All in favor? Motion carried. Has anyone had a chance to review the minutes? If I'm going too fast for you, slow me down.
I'm doing that.
Okay.
Getting me tired, I have to take a nap.
The one thing I question about the minutes is.
Question for you, thought we approved it.
Pardon me?
Thought we approved it.
No, the minutes?
Not the minutes.
No, we approve the agenda.
Oh, agenda, okay, see?
Agenda.
Yeah, let's see, okay, agenda. All right.
We have a spring workshop coming up next month. And my feeling is that especially the new members should attend because I don't think they've been in school yet since their new position.
Are you referring to the spring fall educational workshop that's brought up for all members, spring, fall, two times a year, that, uh, full of point, okay?
Have you ever been in any schooling since you've been on this board?
No.
Okay. So in our minutes, we have here, which confuses me, spring and fall educational workshop was brought up for all members two times a year, which is a requirement to be at both.
Uh huh.
You will get you will get mileage and meeting pay. You need to send the Google Maps to the clerk for more information to come when classes are available to the board made it mandatory. But no penalty of members don't go.
That's exactly the way it was stated.
What does mandatory mean?
Doubt shell, but, uh.
So, uh, there, there's no penalty if you don't, but they do require you to go. So I am planning.
So the penalty would be, you don't get paid, but you should.
No, 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 that's not, no, it's just, there is no penalty if you can't make it, I mean, for example, if you get sick or whatever, you can't make it.
Well, I I agree to that, but if you just don't want to go and you need to be educated to make decisions on this board, why do you say mandatory in one sentence and does it matter in the next sentence?
Well, this wasn't that it doesn't matter, it's just that you won't be punished if you can't make it. So the plan is to go.
I mean, yeah, if you get sick, you can't go, but.
Yep.
Or that does happen near the Memorial Weekend, so some people might leave early, but I think it's in the best interest of this board and the person who sits on this board, board to become well educated in this particular field.
I think we all agree, that's a good point.
Do you want to remove the last part of that sentence then? No penalty of member doesn't go?
I don't think that it needs to be in there.
But that's what was stated in the meeting.
It was, but you don't have to put everything that was stated in the meeting in.
I like you. We're gonna be friends, all right, I'll take that out.
But we know that we need to.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Good question, want to recopy this and, uh, put that for the next meeting minute with, uh, our fellow that does it?
Well, we can, you know, if we don't have any other comments in the minutes, we can approve the minutes with the deletion of that statement.
Perfect, all right.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, well, do we have any other, are there any other comments or?
No, I don't think so, is there?
I was okay with this, so.
I'll motion it.
Okay, well, second, uh, several minutes.
Motion. By Matt.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
I I seconded, you you moved, I think I said.
Yep, I got that.
Yeah.
All right, with that, things are happening.
Motion carried. Was there any old business that should be added to the agenda before the agenda was approved? If there is none, we'll move on to new business.
All right, moved open public hearing, twenty twenty three dash two sixty four. I moved open, uh, the public hearing, number twenty twenty three dash two sixty four.
I'll support.
Uh, see, Matt, motion. Stan supported.
Set it?
Danny, one of the vote.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. New business? We. We have this applicant of what's the case number here?
Twenty three dash two sixty four.
Twenty twenty three dash two sixty four and the applicant's name would like to come to the podium.
Brian Trump over for Tom and Brittany Smith.
Hey, are you the applicant?
Applicant.
Okay, so you two aren't the applicant, he is.
They're the owners.
What's your name?
My name is Brian Trump.
Brian? T R E P P A? B P A, and you are the?
Builder.
Builder, hey.
This is, sorry, I'm in Britain for the owners of the property, obviously, and Smith. Um, the ones that purchased the, uh, property from our family to be something that, uh, pretty much instead of worse.
Okay, and, uh, your family owned it prior to you then, correct?
It's been in their family, so.
Okay.
My grandmother, when she passed away, she split it up into parts, uh, did it to man samples, purchased it back some.
Sorry for all the questions, go ahead.
Ryan, you want to just have them make their?
Want to make your case?
Yeah, so we're here to, we want to construct the house behind the existing, uh, barn. And according to the ordinance, the barn must be at five hundred feet and currently the barn fits at two hundred and ninety eight point seven feet from the front of the property lines. Which is like the variance to be able to build the house behind the barn. Keep being and and keep the barn standing. At times I've been in the family, I think nineteen forty seven is when Islam has been there. And they have no intentions of tearing it down. They'd like to, you know, one day fix it up. Make it, you know, more useful, I mean, it's useful right now. Again, their intention was never to buy this piece of property and and had to tear a barn down.
So you made this split.
Combination.
Yeah, they they bought two pieces of property to to make the nineteen point eight acres.
Where that property ends on the east side? Is that the end of that package or is there more property to the east?
In the east? The east is another five acres, it's owned by my mother and father. And then to the east of that is the next five acre parcel that, uh, another homeowner lives on, but yes, there's a five acre parcel between ours and the next one.
As the ravine is on this side.
I'm gonna show something, yeah, so to the east of our property is Rachel, what's her last name, Rachel? Wait, wait, yeah, she lives in my, uh, that house was my aunt's house before she sold it. And she lives to the east of the property, but there's a five acre parcel between that as you're moving west. And then there's our twenty acre parcel that includes the barns. And then it continues west towards the, uh, Gerald Creek that maybe they was called.
Your your parcel is the one that has all the dirt on it, that's completely cleared, right?
Yeah, yeah, so we put in the, the permits that they had out there and, you know, that's where the, there's a lot of remnants to apply that large, so you need to divvy it out across the property.
It's important to note, we're not building directly behind that standing barn, we're building more to the east of it, a type of diagonal, so it's not like we're building right behind that barn. It's still gonna be, we are holding from the road, it's not gonna be blocking anything like that.
Moving a large house?
Um, barely a large house, sub thirty five hundred square foot.
You guys want to see picture of little barn, did you?
I can see him again, I looked at him. I went out there and I took a look at it, I got.
What is that, what is that?
Right now, it just has some, some minor, I saw you do it.
I did call.
Yeah, 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 just to say.
He's got a tractor, actually, one of the tractors.
There's so much rain out there, it's so muddy.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
One of the tractors in the picture does need a barn, right?
I didn't drive too far. I just watched. So is, do you have anything else that you wanted to present or?
I just have a letter from one of the neighbors directly to the the west.
Your name?
Right here, I'll give it to you. Chairperson. The club will read something. He is here too.
So what is the practical difficulty? In this? To justify variance.
Prior to that ordinance being written.
Yeah, but what's the practical difficulty? So we are not supposed to grant a dimensional variance unless there's a practical difficulty in this situation. So if there's like, uh, special conditions or unique conditions of land, but the land is just where it's totally clear, it's not an unusual shape, it's not, you know, it hasn't got valleys in it or anything like that, I mean, what's, you know, um, you know, is there something unique about it other than the fact that it has the burn? I think not.
Property, you know, it's just the uniqueness of the barn, the age of the barn. Right, you needed someone different, you know, it's not like in the existing garage, it's not a twenty four by twenty four garage and someone tore a house down, that's been built in the last twenty years, this is something that's been standing.
Right.
Yeah, for many, many years.
Proper placement of that house too, the the depth of that property is over six feet, hundred feet deep. That that barn is only three hundred foot off the road for us to put that house in front of that barn, with the side of that barn. I mean, the dimension would look off, one from the house and the appropriate use of the yard to have the pond in the backyard that we already have to enjoy it and the amount of area in the front. House is basically placed right in the middle of that property and is pretty much adjacent to my Uncle Joe's house, it's directly to the west of us. So we continue that line of of the houses across the back there. Uh, additionally, when we had the fill taken out of the, out of the pond, we had, we weren't aware of this variance. Um, that house is going to be a walkout and the elevation was built up at that location with some of the dirt in mind that we were thinking we were going to make that for a walkout. The amount of dirt that's built up there, the cost that would take to move that dirt forward ahead of that barn is astronomical, it'd be better off tearing the barn down, but we're not going to tear the barn down. Um, the other option is possibly not be able to build at that site, I don't know whether there are options there is, but that barn's been in the family, it means too much. I'd be able to pay that barn my entire life.
So the requirement is that, um, it's going to be in the the front yard that, um, that'd be behind the house unless it's set back at least five hundred feet.
Correct.
So the easy way to comply with the ordinance would be to build the house in front of the barn so that it's closer to the road than the barn is.
Right, that's, that's what I was referring to, the, for one, the depth of that property, the amount of footage, the uh, cost of moving all that dirt, we already moved once prior to.
True, but the thing is, it's incumbent on you to know what the ordinance is before you start doing.
Saying I, I didn't know that, it's not something that was ever brought to my attention.
No, I understand, I understand, but that's, that's, that's ignorance of the law on your part.
Sure, oh, trust me, I, I already said all that works.
I know, that's why I said that, because you understand that that's, that's not.
Put it on your guys' phone, though.
Right.
But there's other people in the immediate neighborhood that have fires closer to the property.
There are not, I looked there, on the other side, exactly, but that is not part of Columbus Township. So there is not on that road, I drove down that road, they are not in front of it, this would be the only one that I saw, now I may have missed one, but this would be certainly in the immediate area, that'd be the only one. And the house next door to you, right on the west side, is in front of the barn. So it would not be unusual for. Yeah, so not getting, it would not be out of the ordinary for your house to be at that same distance away. But so, again, we can't, we don't have the authority to grant a variance unless there is a practical difficulty that's demonstrated. And the only difficulty that you've mentioned is cost, which is not grounds for a variance. Um, and and really sentiment.
Hmm.
And the easy way to keep that barn, if it's important to you, is to change the location of where you're going to build the house. Put it in front.
Even though that'll completely ruin what the the look of that area is going to be, I mean, we're.
You know, that, that, that's a matter of taste.
Large tax base into the property if we do this, man, I don't understand.
That's a matter of opinion.
Reason for the setback, what's the reason for the rule?
Um, the reason is that this is, uh, you know, intended to be primarily a residential and still agricultural in a sense, actually, and, um, and the ordinance makes it clear that with respect to nonconformities, so you would be creating a nonconformity by doing this, but with respect to nonconformities that already existed, you know, they're grandfathered, but under seven point one of the zoning ordinance, it says that, um, a nonconforming use of a structure, a nonconformous use of land, or a nonconformous use of a structure and land shall not be extended or enlarged after passage of this ordinance. So the default is that we are not to create nonconforming uses, again, we can make a dimensional variance if there is a practical difficulty. But it really hasn't been demonstrated a practical difficulty here.
Practical difficulty is, is, I guess, a matter of perspective, I mean.
Well, the, the age of the barn is definitely something, like I said, it wasn't, you know, that, that barn has been there and located there before this ordinance was written. Um, I think in this unique situation, this is a barn that deserves to to stay erected versus tore down because of an ordinance.
The barn can stay. It would be torn down because the owners want to build their house further back and not in conformance with requirements to keep the barns.
You're right. Yeah, so, so, hang on, you'll be able to talk. Just the whole aesthetic of it would be better to keep it in the center of the property than to come up before the barn is just how the house is designed and and how the location of the whole property in itself would be.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this is, uh, the, the cost of what it would take to move the soil and it is on me, you're right, I I didn't know the ordinance when I I was preparing for this. And if I'd have known, maybe things have been different, but the situation we're in now, I will not be able to build that house. That is that significant of a difference, move that much dirt, the amount of money I have into what's there, the house will not go up. I, we, we can improve the, the property and 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 improve the worth of all the houses in the area about what we're building, we're building something really special and it's something that my, me and my wife worked a lot to where we're at to be able to afford this, this isn't like, you know, the blue collar workers that came up and were doing this the hard way.
You, you, you know, again, I, I'm, I'm really sorry, I'm really sorry that you didn't, you didn't check the ordinance out first, I mean, one of the factors we're looking at practical difficulty is whether or not the issue is self-created.
Well, it's, it's not something I would look into, I mean, I, unless somebody told me when I was digging the pond and talking about it, when I met with Roland about this, after I'd already done the stuff, he mentioned this, and this is, that's when I found out about it. And he says, you go in front of the peel board and this has happened in the past, there is past practice to it, he told me that.
The fact that there may be other nonconformities, uh, somewhere else is not relevant to the issue of determining if there's a practical difficulty. Like I said, you know, one of the questions is, is the issue self-created? Well, the issue that you're talking about really is a money issue. And again, that is not a factor in determining whether or not a variance should be granted, a dimensional variance. Um, I, you know, you know, unless there's something else besides what you've already said, I'm having a tough time with this one.
It would be.
Any other questions? I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say.
Well, the barn is a big issue and in going back in my handbook, you self-inflicted when you divided that property. And of course, it would have been a decision of yours that the barn would have stayed on the other property and maybe somehow got a, uh, with that moving company that can move barns to put it where it should be, because I have a barn that I would like to have moved in the back of my property. But it is what it is at this point in time and it is difficult for people who want to do things not to research before they start spending money and planning, they should always, and and this is hindsight now, uh, and we have to go according to the rules and any other case does not set precedent because the public does not know what all of the information was when our board decides a decision. You know, you hear, oh, they got it, but you don't know all of the facts on why they got it. And our board is responsible for making legal decisions because if this goes to court, the judge is going to look at it to see, did we go according to our rules? And if we didn't, then everything just blows up. You can appeal this if you want. I mean, I'm not saying we've made a decision yet, but.
But that's why we're coming from the board to ask for variance, to be able to build the house behind the barn, according to your, you know, different than your.
If I can, if I can find a variance to give you, I will. But I have to go.
We're only breaking the law on variance, is, instead of the five hundred, we're at three, oh, two hundred and ninety eight feet instead of five hundred feet. So we're asking, you know, for the two hundred foot just shy of two hundred foot variant, a little over, sorry.
I was, I was the one that brought this forward to have this meeting. Once I found out about the, the issue with the variance, I'm the one that pursued this, otherwise, if I hadn't found it, we'd still be going down that road and be building, there'd be a foundation, it would be a whole nother ball of wax, I came here because I wanted to do the right thing and presented to you guys in the, in the proper way.
You wouldn't be able to get, you wouldn't be able to get a bill, billing.
No, you wouldn't.
If, if it hadn't been caught, it would, then.
Well, that may be true.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, I'm the one that caught it, I'm the one that brought it to your attention, if it had never been caught, I'm. I'm the one that brought it to your attention. If it had never been caught, I'm just trying to do the right thing. And there's no reason it would have been caught. Why would it have been?
Well, I, I think you're, you're speculating there, you're going to be, well, well, be.
Maybe it would have, maybe it wouldn't have, but I, like, I'm just speaking of what I'm trying to do here. I'm trying to do the right thing.
No, and, and I, I, you know, I surely appreciate that you're, that you come here, you know, again. You know, as Diane has mentioned, there are rules. And when you're spec, uh, trying to get a dimensional variance, which you are, you have to demonstrate a practical difficulty. And I haven't heard anything other than that it would be very expensive. And cost is not grounds for granting a dimensional variance.
It is the difference of me building there or not, and the part of the reason I'm building there is my mom and dad are right across the street, they're in their eighties. My dad still climbs on the roof and tries to clean his gutters, because he doesn't wanna ask for help. If I'm right there, I can help him. I don't want him falling off the roof and breaking his neck.
I agree, and, and you can still build there.
No, I can't.
Yes, you can, you just have to move it up.
It's gonna be astronomical to build, what we did right there already has been over a hundred thousand dollars to do that.
Again.
Man, you gotta have some sympathy to the situation.
I do have sympathy, but you have to, you have to have some sympathy for somebody who's making a decision.
Sure.
On a variance when they're, you know, supposed to follow the law.
That's why I'm asking for a request of two hundred feet, something you can walk from here to that road. And nobody even visually is gonna be able to tell with the eye.
How is, how is that gonna change building behind the barn?
Cause the site's already been built up back there, that when we dug the pond, we had to have a place for the soil to go for the walkout. If we were gonna build right there, I'm like, okay, well, let's take that dirt and put it where the walkout is gonna be. Because it'll save us from having to move it multiple times. Now that that dirt's already been put there. The amount of money to take that dirt and move it to that front is enough where we can't do it.
Hey, you have, uh, do you have anything else? I think you've made your point clearly. Diane, did you have any other questions or Stan or Dave?
Oh, there is, there is a point, I'm sorry, I might have made a good point. Part of the reason that we had to combine those two ton acre, our, our hole into one. To build across the street from them, there was no water. We drilled four times on that property. It was all dry holes. So, we had to move over and drill on their property. Behind where the barn was at, that was my mom and dad's ton acres. That was the only place we were able to get water, it's directly across from Raiswell, my grandmother's old well. That's the only place we could find water in the property. We got like over fifty thousand dollars in drilling holes, trying to find a well. Once we found that well, we had to combine those two ton acre parcels.
Otherwise, you never would have combined the property. You might have not even purchased that barn if we got water.
The well is on your property, right?
It is now, yeah, it was the contingent of buying that property was if we had water on that, that property.
Right, guess when you, you check, um, you check if there's water and you check, um, if the ground perks.
The ground perks great. So that would be a practical difficulty that they had to purchase that.
We purchased those properties and we could have kept ton acres and ton acres with the barn. And then we wouldn't have to say anything if we built behind the barn because we kept those parcels separate. But instead, we had a well on there and we had to combine everything into that nineteen point eight.
When you combined them, you got a frontage in the front of four hundred and twenty feet?
You, you, you actually, you actually could have got an easement to the well, to tell you the truth, just so you know.
Or talked about that.
It's a parish property.
That was not a, interesting.
Yeah, no, I. If they don't wanna give an ease, but that's their choice. Do you have any questions, Stan or Dave?
Not at this point.
I'm gonna get a motion to either approve or deny the applicant's request.
Yeah, somebody else.
You have more people than one of the board.
Oh, I see, okay.
Well, I'm not sure how, how this is going, but in my mind, off the top of my head. There's enough property there to separate that property again. And have just the barn on a piece of property and then their house would be a, a distinct separate property. Which would eliminate anything involvement with the barn. They just have their own piece of property. And I realize there's a well thing there, across the road, I've got the same damn thing. Uh, but we got an easement from four hundred feet away, five hundred feet. That lets them have a lot of water line and a well and everything. So, to me, break it into two pieces of property with part of it having the barn and part of it having their new house where they can put. They wouldn't have to move but a little bit of the dirt to get what they need done and put the house where they want it. And, and I think that would be something that would let you guys do what you have to do and let them build the house they want. Cause there's.
They wouldn't even need a variance in that case.
Yeah.
Excuse me, quick question, how wide is this property now?
It's just, wait, let me, let me finish.
It's had enough, left enough off the west side of there and add a piece of. Park that the barn's on and grazed a separate distinct piece of property, and then their house would be something else. And they could own both pieces of the property, but it wouldn't interfere.
I don't think they could own both pieces of property because it's gonna be, because of the, it connects like that, I think it's considered all the one. Personal, but, but if it was, if, you know, and maybe, I, I don't know, maybe it could be split and then. Transferred to somebody else.
By the time you got done moving that stuff, you can put a separate driveway in there to the barn. And then they can have their own driveway for their.
Yeah, they could have an easement to the, to the driveway.
There's, there's a thousand feet there that you can be, you know. That way they can redistribute it and make everything work.
Yeah, that, that might work. And, and, but again, if you, if you did that, if it's not, you know, if it's not their property, you know, and somebody else's. At that point, they wouldn't even need a variance, right?
Well, each name and go on the way.
You know, well, how much frontage are you talking on each piece?
Well, there's gotta be, I have over a thousand feet there, so I, I would imagine you could. Peel off whatever's gonna be required to attach to the barn that would leave your requirements. And still leave him enough requirement to build his house.
Yeah, I, I, I can't opine on that, but I mean, it's certainly a creative idea.
You know, there's more than one way to make things work and, uh. I don't know all the exact, I live across the road, so, um, and, and.
So David, did you wanna get his name and everything? Is that what you're looking for?
Yes. What's your name, sir?
I'm Darrell, I'm always, H A W S.
Spell it one more time, last name? Okay, H A W S, cool, thank you. Thank you.
Been in that barn since nineteen eighty, in and out of the fixing machinery and looking at stuff, so. I don't wanna go.
Thank you.
Put the piece off, what kind of frontage is required for the one you're putting on?
What's it?
Two fifty, two fifty, is it? Could be your problem, I think.
Well, because I thought you had four hundred and twenty frontage. You've got more in the back than you have in the front, and then you took that little divot to put the barn where it's at.
See, I think that it's in, that's in the. That's in the single-family residential, right? I think it's, uh, two hundred. With lot, with.
There's a little over six hundred.
Yeah. Um, agricultural.
It was two hundred. One, one is two eighty, one, one was two eighty-two and one was two twenty-four, I'm saying the report.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's two hundred. Passes down.
It's a, but that's.
That, that, that's something you would have to follow up on afterwards and you could certainly talk to, you know, the inspector and. And others on that one.
This, this field sheet is castaway, why, and that's why I don't understand why it's.
One more time, how wide is that property total right now?
Six hundred and sixty.
Thank you.
Put that off, does that have to go a different one?
Because I don't think that they can, I think that's just, you know, if you acquire a parcel right next to you, that, that, that's then consolidated. But, um, again, I think that's something that you would have to consult with others on to confirm.
I bought the property next to me and it's a separate piece. I bought another green year piece. I have my piece and I bought a piece next to me, it's two separate properties. I own them both.
Okay, well, I, I, again, I think you'd have to follow up on, on that one afterwards, it may be different too with, with the fact that, um. It's one parcel now, so you'd be trying to split, splitting it off and then to avoid that, I don't think that would work. So, I'm sorry.
We're, we're just trying to keep it on the, the nineteen acres and.
I, I, no, I know, I know what you're trying to do. Uh, we're trying to come up with some way of complying with the ordinance and meeting your requirements too. Which is what this gentleman, Mr. Haas, suggested, so.
There's, there's, there's other options, I'm sure, but again, that's not what we're here to.
Correct. Is there any other questions from? Any other comments, I guess?
Uh, I'm Joe Augustin, sister. I raised there. So bottom line is, I don't know.
Do you wanna, so Dave, you want his address?
It's ninety-seven fifty.
So you're right next door to?
Yeah, so the split, it was forty acres originally, and so it was split according to. I, my parcel's just under seven acres, and then, and this is Raymon to split, right? So he's the one immediately.
To the west?
Yeah, that. So, you know, um.
Right, so are you on the east end?
I'm on the west.
Oh, so you're further west.
That Jerome Creed goes through the front of my. I'm the culprit there. So, anyhow, here's, here's the thing. I have total respect for it, since I understand him, uh, I used to work at First Day Bank for years, I get on. I do understand a lot of that. I also know that many times they're made for certain reasons, okay, and that makes sense. It, you know, for the future, a lot of times, you know, plan, you get to say, why do we want five hundred? Why, why five, why come to be four hundred, what's three hundred? But in this particular case, you have a couple things that run deeper than that. And I'm gonna point out, you know, in Columbus Township right there, my house alone is close to six hundred feet back. Okay, um, I said behind the barn technically, but over. Um, just to the east of us, there's homes that go way back. So it's not so much an issue of that it's too far where they're building. It's just because of the barn, right? And I think that's because of the ordinance, the way it reads. So that's the whole point. We could probably beat it to death and I get it, I do get it. But look, we're talking about a hundred year old barn that is in excellent condition. That represents the community that we grew up with. Sure, there's this ordinance. And yes, maybe there was an oversight that we didn't quite realize the depth of it, but that's why. Uh, we really are requesting a variance to consider that, okay, now at this point. Practical, I mean, that's a very good word, practical, is, is it practical to tear that down? No, not practical. Is it practical to have him move all that soil? No, it's, it's not practical. So there's a lot of things that aren't practical. Is it realistic? Can it happen? Well, I guess somebody could make it happen, but why? There's too many things as, as Mr. Shiskin pointed out, that are being torn out and destroyed. Um, you know, that yard is dear and dear to our family, that settlement, your way, doesn't count. But on the other hand, should, some things should count. There should, there should be some practical, practical approach here, realizing that, okay, look. Normally, we don't do this because we gotta stick to the rules, and I totally, is it Diane? I totally respect what you said because, man, oh man, I know in finance and banking, uh, in a lot of things. You've gotta stick to the rules within region, but rules, I mean, you wouldn't have. A variance word unless there are options. In other words. In your whole life, you can't tell me things may had a twist a little or change. And all we're asking here is, please think of the consideration of that barn. The outside of the block, so it's realizing, yeah, okay, so we're asking you to try to go with. And realize the house will be behind, but it's not really behind, as Brittany said, it's all to the side. You saw, you saw where it's gonna be probably, if you saw the dirt, where the dirt is, one of the piles. And so, yeah, it's a, it's a little bit more than probably would normally do. But on the other hand, there's houses definitely back that, I'm back that far, just above. And it's not hurting anything, raised right here, I mean, yeah, it's good with you next door. It's not, we're not hurting anything, we're, so because of maybe the history of the farm. That used to be our own farm, can't figure out, at least, I'd like climb that sidewalk.
You were born there.
Yeah, I was born, but that's, oops, I got into sentiment again.
Sorry.
What can I say? This is a big deal. This is not just, you know, well, the ordinance is, is, I'm sorry. Whoa, whoa, wait a minute, this is a big deal. So please, I appreciate, I, I respect your, your points, all well taken, but in the midst of it all. This is something that we are thoroughly excited that, uh, Brittany are looking to build it. We wanna make it happen as they have designed it with, together with the township, you guys worked together. So, it, you know, to say who oversaw it or over, it was an old time, well, okay. It's his responsibility to see those things, but could you please seriously consider this as. Something that we need to just make the variance happen, that two hundred feet difference. Uh, especially because it sits behind, uh, our, um, daddy of the old homestead. Uh, that, it doesn't disturb anything, it's, it's quite a distance from the house that they're living. I mean, I don't see why it can't move. Um, that's all I gotta say, really, I just, I don't wanna, I don't wanna push here, this is not a matter of that. Uh, please understand, this is a matter of trying to be practical. And I, I'm gonna use it because I think, yes, it is a practical issue. So thank you, uh, I, I, that's all I'm gonna say, I really think. This is an opportunity to do a variance that will help make things good in that section.
Can I just add one more thing to show you a plot plan of the property, just because Joe's house does sit further back than existing. What we're proposing to build, we're, we're at like four hundred and ten feet back from the house. So just trying to show you, you know, that we're not trying to go too extreme. So there's the barn in question, you know, from the road back, there's a house.
So this is two ninety-eight and this is four ten.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, and then, you know, a, a future. Okay, and then, you know, a a future barn towards the back is is in the the plans.
Yeah, I think I've got it.
But Joe's house is like, you know, he's another two hundred feet past. Raymond's house is up up front, which is, you know, how it was before. It's just not. We're just not saying, hey, we want to go to the back piece of the property and 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 not go. Towards the front of the property. We're we're off the road a decent amount. But in the same token. Kind of wanted to keep the farm fields up front. And not build too close to that. And that letter right there is from Raymond, the property directly to the west.
Oh, I thought you were gonna keep that.
Hey, we I got a quick question. And you said we had to drill the well behind the existing barn.
Yeah, see how the jobs like that and how it's a weird job.
Yeah.
Well, it was. The well is. You got me backwards. Well, it was right here. So they had to get, they had to add this to the property.
Yeah, see, if you would have highlighted that, the location of the well is real close to this property line and behind the barn.
Right. Well, it's on the property, but they had to, they had to. Instead of making it perfect, they had to jog it over to get the to get the.
Oh.
To get the well on the property itself. But what I'm just trying to show you is that, you know, Joe's house. Joe's house is going to be six hundred feet right in here. Raymond's house, gentleman over here, his house is right, right up here, which is the original. Yeah, yeah, which is the original farmhouse.
The original barn, yeah.
But. The well is, you know.
So. So you couldn't find water on this other parcel.
We drove the well.
Can show you all the spots we drilled on that.
We drove the well.
I had a gale prime.
So the reason they shot this was not only for the barn, but also for the well. To keep the well on the property.
And I just wanted to show you that, hey, we're not going. We're not building the house back here. You know what I mean? That we're we're still keeping it towards the front of the property, but in the same token. The barn is still in front of the the house. That that was my point, yeah.
Yeah, if I could say so, so just to point that out. So that's a good point. It lines up with my house. You see what I'm saying? And I do, I totally respect your point. Don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to make trouble, but. We're we're really pretty consistent back there. So the new homes would be to tear down a barn because of the ordinance. I don't think the ordinance, I'm going to be candid about it. I don't think the ordinance was intended. For this. I think it's intended for other reasons, and it makes sense. I do agree with that. But, you know, to take. How do I say this? To take things. Uh, literally, you know what I mean? You got to kind of read into it a little bit. And and maybe I'm wrong. But I do believe that that's. It wasn't to stop this opportunity. It was to. Manage the properties better, make sure they're not being abused, okay, which.
So there's.
I'm sure there are. But this is not.
Right.
We're 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 in.
Oh, I see why they done that.
And yeah, so so if you look at my house, look right out.
Went back, barn behind his house, meet the requirements, and then went. An extra thirty five feet. That's why this is, yep.
What is the ordinance there to protect? I mean, the ordinance is written, is it to protect the homeowner from building? Um, why is the ordinance there? I mean. Because if it's if it's, um. If it's a difficulty and and their 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 house is there, they got to live with it. I mean, like they said, no one would even know, driving down thirty two mile road, that if it was five hundred or three hundred. And they said the house is off, so no one would even know. But what is the ordinance written for? Is to protect the homeowner?
Well, part of the reason for those ordinance is to preserve property values in the community. And again, you know, this is primarily residential to the and agrarian.
It's agricultural.
So. Uh, well, it's.
It's not.
Combination of, so these aren't, these aren't all farms out there. They're not building a farm. So, um. It is residential in nature. It's it's a, the district is single family residential. Um, so that's part of the reason. But again. You know, I'm not going to debate with you the purpose of the ordinance. It is what it is. I mean, it was adopted. By the governing body, I, you know. I I'm not gonna, I can't undo the ordinance. I mean, that would be a different process if you're trying to get a, you know, the ordinance amended. What we're doing, what we're doing is, what we're doing here is we're considering a grid dimensional variance, and we have to comply with the requirements of the law in doing that.
Or make a variance.
We did, we can't just make a variance. There are standards for making variance. Again, you have to show practical difficulty. Cost is not a consideration.
You said the well.
Yeah, well, the well is not, again, that's that 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 doesn't matter either. Again, the issue here is what the ordinance requires.
I think practically speaking, honestly. Is where the house in the neighborhood is set. And that's why I'm trying to point that out. We're in line with that. Where he's talking about building, is it lying with our house and others? And I'm just saying, it's because of the barn is why. You're saying you should build there then or get rid of the barn. Well, that's because of the ordinance. And and just it's unfortunate that that clashes and that, don't get me wrong, I don't think your job is easy today, okay? But I would ask that you seriously. Take this upon yourselves to realize that this variance. Would solve all of that and say, look, we understand. Uh, you're, it's the nature of our family property. That's what it is.
But he mentioned this exercise. My wife is not leaving out this respect. She has to go to work. She works nights.
No, I'm telling you.
So you know.
I would not.
Get out of here. This is just.
Have a good, have a good evening. Now, I would, I would not accept.
Practical difficulty. I answered the five questions that I was given the answer. It doesn't say anything on there practically difficult that I had to come up with.
It's a requirement for any.
I get that.
Under Michigan law for eighty dimensional variance.
Why I want this variance. It doesn't say what you're trying to do.
That's why I asked you what. Well, that's why I asked you, I, you know, asked what the practical difficulty was.
This question is, I'm scared it doesn't say anything.
Well, maybe the form should be changed, but it's still, you you have an opportunity now to demonstrate what the practical difficulty is.
But I wanted to have a little more preparation by doing that was required. I mean. The answer to these five questions are a requirement to answer that applied to this. It doesn't say anything on the practical difficult.
Sir, what what do you consider practical difficulty? What would what would make it a practical difficulty? Do you plan on using that property still for farming? Do you plan on fencing that property? Is that considered practical? You have the.
I don't.
The distance from the barn to be able to use that?
No, I don't think that. So so under the. Right, right. So, um. One of the things would be special circumstances or circumstances such as. And I'm just reading, this is from the zoning hand, um, zoning board of appeals handbook. Uh, if there is exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or shape, exceptional topographic conditions, or other extraordinary situations related to the property, or use or development of the property immediately adjoining the property in question. Um.
Well, that's actually is an easy one. It's right down the middle of that property in the front, where you want us to put that as the way the property drains down the middle to the road. You can see that on the the topographical maps and everything else. So putting that in would create the whole way that property drains.
But that's because of the buildup of the property.
No, there's a natural. It's always been that.
That's the way it's been since the.
Yeah, it's always been that.
Yeah. It's a, it's, you know, you have to see it, but you said you went out.
I did see it, yeah.
So you know what he means by the way it looks? It's like a.
Well, it's slants towards the road, yes.
Yeah. It's like, there's a high part on both sides. That's part of the reason we built up where the house was at.
Right, which, but I mean, the thing is, you would have had to build up either way.
But it also goes towards that middle. I mean, we've been having to reshape that whole property and change everything.
Yeah.
The hill, green aisles, has everything I saw there for years. I mean, it's been defined that. The drain that way. I mean, you're like reading up in the wheelbarrow doing that property, changing it. That was considered when we picked the location.
Well, on page twenty one in our handbook. Number fifty six, this standard often referred to as self-created. Is often misunderstood in the subject of differing opinions. There are circumstances when the applicant has clearly taken some action. Creating a need for the variance. For example. If an applicant splits a lot. Which previously conformed to the requirements of the zoning ordinance into two smaller ones. One or both of them then do not meet the ordinance. The action is clearly self-created. On the other hand. A buyer of a lot that cannot be developed without a variance. May ask the ZBA to grant a variance to allow the use of the lot. In this case, the applicant did not take an affirmative action by creating the lot. Accordingly. This standard should not be used as a reason for denial. Although the variance must still meet the other standards of the ordinance. And you have the option to comply with the variances. And you're gonna have to sacrifice. The barn. Which you don't want to do, but you can comply by putting the house in front. And the whole thing is settled. But it's it's an action that you're. It's not going to go with your heart. But. In hindsight, the whole thing didn't start. In the right place so that you knew. There weren't going to be any problems. And now we are faced with. Trying to uphold the law and do our job. And. It's just a difficult situation, but we have to adhere to.
The word, in the word.
Whatever.
In the word of what you read there, the only thing you said, splitting two lots into two smaller lots. It didn't say anything about combining two lots and the one.
Well, it was, it was a backhoe of when you split it. If you would have left the barn. On the other property.
Yeah, and I understand that and that.
That would have solved this whole issue.
Yeah, but that was part of the state. So the reality is the reasons for the split were just common sense with the family. But at this point. It is two parties led together. And, you know. There's probably reasons to say, sorry, we're not going to grant it. But the same token, there are definitely reasons to grant it. And and the common sense reason here is that it's not hurting anybody. It's not affecting anybody's neighbors. It 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 is. It is, like you said, something about, uh. The issue of the. Value, I think that was, I'm sorry, I don't know your name. Let's see.
Matt.
Matt, I'm sorry, Matt. With you, what you said about. Sustain the values, make sure the values of the property are maintained, like I think Chris here asked, why the variance? It's to, and that makes sense, or the ordinance is to maintain the values of the property. Well, that property then will, it's certainly going to retain the value.
It increases.
It's going to increase it. And it, yeah, it just. So you've got both sides, and I understand it's not an easy position to be in, but. The truth of the matter is, we can have some common sense here. The fact is, it's a it's a beautiful location. We're not asking, nobody's going to run a business out of it. Nobody's going to do anything to cause trouble. It'll be, it'll be safe. It'll be part of our family. So we're just asking that please consider seriously. This variance. Realizing. However, you want to use the word practical variety, the fact that it needs to have this so that he can go on and finish the product. It's gonna, the value of the home and the property around is going to be nothing but better.
Respectfully. We are in. A legal position. You are in an emotional. Edition, emotional state.
Why have the word variance? I mean, the reality is you are legally. Able to do the variance.
If we go according to our ordinances and according to our laws.
You're able to do the variance. There's nothing stopping you from doing the variance. Nothing.
Do you have any other questions? I moved at the public hearing, please.
Can you second us here?
Sure.
I second.
Can you vote on it, Dan?
Can I get a motion to either approve or deny the applicant?
Diane, we need to vote on the motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can we close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to. Close the public portion.
What?
So you're first or you're second?
I'm a first. Need somebody to second.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carried, all ayes.
Now we did discuss.
Okay. Right.
So.
You want to go first?
You know, I've already stated this before, but under. Under the law, there has to be. That's practical difficulties and it hasn't been demonstrated. It's, um, and cost is not. Consideration for practical difficulties. Um, it's unfortunate because at times in. If I'm sooner about the requirements, you would have done things differently. But. That's not. Something that, you know. We really can correct. Because that was something that he did on his own, so. I don't see how we can rationalize this as meeting the standard to to grant a dimensional variance.
Does it say practical right?
We are, we're discussing now.
You're out of order.
We're we're. We're not discussing anything.
Give us a few minutes here.
You know, um. Again, he could tear the barn down, he could move the house up, as Mr. Haas suggested, there might be a possibility of. Swing off that lot, selling it to somebody else with the barn on it. And. Taking care of the problem that way. There may be other ways of doing it too, but it just requires some. Follow up, uh, due diligence on on this part.
Yeah, so if we. Think about what we're doing, it gives them still an open option to. Fix that on their side by.
Well.
Re-splitting or whatever you do.
Possibly, yeah.
Right.
So I I. I I I can't rationalize, I can't. Justify in a motion and specify reasons showing practical difficult.
Because you have to show one of the four. In our motion. For the for the minutes.
I have a counterpoint.
What?
The barn's been there since before, all of us have been living here, right? Was put in from the road way back in nineteen, excuse my date, forty something, right? So it was AOK at that time period. He chose to put the property together. After a death of a family member. Um.
You mean put it together?
Well, yeah, it was it was in different parcels or what have you, and he basically put all together to make it happen. The difficulty he had was a was a well. So we had to play around with the well, the well locations due to the dry area, so it's part of the part of the parcel. Um. It's been there forever. I don't see it as a public eyesore. So that being said, I, because that thing has been there since the beginning of time. My opinion is granted because it's not hurting anything and it hasn't hurt anybody. For the last hundred years has been sitting there. Oh, yeah, it's it's an offset that was built prior to, so.
Dave, what's the practical difficulty? You've got, you've got to be able to justify that and articulate in the motion. And grant that. The factors that demonstrate the practical difficulty in accordance with the law. You know, the fact that something has been there for a long time before I was born.
It was right then, but now it's.
You know, right. Again, under the ordinance, non-conforming uses are not supposed to be continued. They can be grandfathered, but this is not grandfathering a non-conforming use.
But it was there and the structure was built prior to all of that.
I understand, Dave, but you have to comply with the law.
Well, that's my counterpoint. Not to mention. You have all the family, friends, neighbors here. Got a whole line of information. And the neighbors aren't complaining about it, they seem to be pro-barn. So. That's my second.
Again, that, that, that is something you can take into consideration, but it is not determinative. Because again, you grant the variance, it lasts.
The variance goes with the land.
No matter, even with the neighbors in the future who will. Be there, so.
Unfortunately, we don't have the future, as uh as you can tell when the barn was built.
I know, I understand.
It couldn't see the future, that you're gonna change it from what it was to what it is now and.
Yeah.
Structure's been.
Well, I, you know, again, I don't know the history of that property and what was on the property before and anything else, so. Alright, so Stan?
In my opinion, that. Five hundred foot was intended when you had. Two hundred and fifty foot frontage. So that you didn't have somebody that was having existing barn on it near the road. And then the lot next to itself is the next two hundred and fifty foot lot, and then the people complained that. Put their house back farther, they don't like to look at the barn, or somebody didn't, you know, keep it up, but. In this situation, because that west slot or the farthest east slot, they couldn't get water on. That almost makes that lot worthless for to build on. So they had to go all the way over here to find water, so we combined them lots, that, this will never be split again. So, you know, that pertaining, that setback, I think was meant when you start doing smaller lots. You know, splitting up when a forty acre farm becomes seven lots at two hundred and fifty feet, if you have enough frontage. That was so somebody had an existing barn on that piece of property. That. Neighbors didn't wanna have to look out and see that existing barn. But in this situation, because it's never gonna get split again. I, you know, I just. When he brought up the practical thing and I didn't realize that the well was behind the barn, I wish that would have been on the information before. You know, it kind of deems that. Farthest east slot at three hundred and twenty-four feet. Almost worthless, when you can't find water on it, who wants to build a house on a lot that you can't get water? So the fact that they're, you know, gonna have this three hundred and twenty-four feet and two eighty-two combined. This, this will never be split again, if they build that house in the middle of that property where they wanna do it, it's never gonna get split again. They own the barn, the neighbors, you know, like Dave said, on the other side are, are seem to be okay with it. I just. In, in my vision, it's one of these deals where, you know, it's. Practical. To give that variance, to leave that barn where it is, because, yeah, that barn could be moved. But would it be practical to spend twenty thousand dollars to have it lifted up? And move several hundred feet to make our variance? When that variance was probably really intended for barns that were a hundred feet off the road or, or even like what Chris's. Families that barns, you know, right off of Dolan Road. And that situation, if that is a lot, and that, that property next door was, you know, split off, then that would be a different situation.
Okay. Well, I, my response to that again is you've raised the same issue of cost. Cost is not justification, it's not grounds for granting a dimensional variance. So I, you know, you can make a motion. Uh, if you want to to grant that and we'll vote on it. Um, but you know, you can, if you're gonna try to justify that. You've got to detail in your motion the practical difficulty. And. I'm just realized that, that. Cost is not. Has not been grounds, is not grounds for a dimensional variance. So, I mean, we're here to consider this as, you know. You wanna make a motion?
Part of it is. Self-inflicted and like Stan said. We never really saw the plans for the house or where the well was or where anything was going to be if. We agreed to give you the variance. So. I still have to go to one of the four. Reasons and I, at this point, I. I can't justify. And give you a reason according to law. To handle this situation.
Would the, the difficulty be they couldn't attain water on the east slide?
No, they have water.
Yeah.
They do now.
Yeah, exactly.
After the split, or the combination, rather.
Correct.
Said to combine it in order to make this happen.
Right.
And that happened to be an existing structure when they did the combination anyway. Again, back to my, it's been there since the beginning of time.
Right. Thing is, they could have built the house, they can still build the house. So that the barn is not in the front yard. And they'd be in compliance with the zoning ordinance. They don't wanna do that because they've spent a lot of money putting dirt. There and didn't consider this at the time. And it would cost money to move that dirt in order to accomplish that. So again, it's a matter of cost.
Putting the cart. And I'm not saying they did it intentionally. And it's too bad that. Even when people buy property. There's a lot of things when you're young that you don't think of.
So let me, let me just kind of. It sounds like. That Stan and Dave may be in favor of it, sounds like you and I may not be. I mean, if we're split, why we need to have the fifth person here. We can take the action now. Uh, if it's going to be split, or we should probably just, you know, make a motion, take a vote. Uh, and, you know, if it's split, then we can't grant the variance. Alternative would be make sure that the fifth person's here so that you can have a majority vote, right?
Did we get any uh information that she wasn't coming today? Okay. Well.
Something you'd wanna table till the next meeting?
That's what I'm just about gonna say.
And then we can have. For a person, they can, you know, provide their input on it.
I uh. I talked to MTA this morning, this afternoon. And. She highly recommended. That if this became. Complicated. That we should table this and have the attorney here.
Well, why don't we, we can still table it, you know, we can talk about that with Bruce afterwards, yeah.
She said, because he has. And I know you're an attorney and you've handled all this good, but there are some questions that. Even you are kind of, kind of confused about. And I would ask your opinion on what was recommended. To table it and. Have the attorney. Be in on this conversation to see what should we do.
Well, attorney can't make the decision, but.
No, but he.
But he can provide additional guidance.
Right.
Sure.
Because. We're at the bottom, we're at the foundation right now. And we wanna move forward to clear the decks. So that you don't run into more complications and maybe. He can advise. How we're gonna fix this. If it's possible. And we do have a May sixteenth um. Another board meeting. Which we could put. And if we really realized before now. He could have been here today, but I didn't get this information till later this afternoon.
Well. I think maybe it would be a good idea to table it and make sure that we have, now the alternate wasn't able to live with tonight. But she should be available next month, I think, right?
Well, I hope so, and and if you're not gonna be available. Please let us know because it worries us, did you get in an accident or something, that's why you're not.
But, we should know in advance.
Right.
Yeah.
Because Barry could have been called in.
I thought that she was going.
No, she wasn't gonna be available either.
Right, yeah, so.
So do we wanna make a motion?
To table it, well. I mean, let me ask Stan and Dave, does that sound reasonable to you? Do you wanna put it off till next month then, or do you wanna? Just make a motion now and.
Well, I don't see how an attorney is gonna actually help us out in this situation.
But, but all I'm saying is that we have, so, again. You wanna make a motion on this? And see where we land, I'm assuming, I don't know actually how you're gonna vote, I mean, just. It sounds like you were gonna vote in favor of the variance. And Stan, I think, was kind of going that way too, now I could be wrong.
Well, I make a motion for a vote then.
So you, well, you wanna move to approve the variance, is that what the motion is?
Yes.
Okay. And to, you need to articulate again the reasons for the practical difficulty that would justify the variance.
Part of the Z, the ZBA, so that being said, if we chose to choose, if we chose to say, hey, it's been there forever. Or the sky is purple. If there's, if there, or the sky is purple, if there is a compelling reason. That we choose to say, hey, thumbs up.
That's, you have to articulate that compelling reason, it has to be in compliance with the law. So it's not just that we can buy Fiat, do it.
I guess. Looking at the front edge, I don't think even splitting it off and to going with less uh frontage. And redoing the property line to go on the east side of the barn and then. You know, divert back over so they keep the well on their property.
You don't have to divert back over, they'd be able to retain the use. That's why Mr. Ha was suggesting that.
What do you guys wanna do?
Somebody's gotta make a motion to whatever you wanna do.
What do you think?
I just think it makes practical sense being that it can never be split again. I mean, it's, yeah, we do have this criteria, but. Somewhere along the line, you just gotta use practical sense with this and.
Stan, I'll let you deal with the motion then. You choose to.
Well, as I said. It'd be great if we had a fifth member here.
Right.
Because if. Am I correct in understanding, Diane, that you would not be inclined to grant the variance?
Right.
Okay. So. If you two are inclined to do that, we'd be at a deadlock. Variance could not be granted, the fifth person were here and were inclined to go one way or the other, at least there'd be a finality. So. Will we just table this? Address it at the next meeting?
So my vote would be to approve, sounds like your vote would be what?
To approve, yeah.
So we should like to table this until the next meeting?
Otherwise it's denied.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to.
That's right.
I'll make a motion to table. A variance request for tonight. Until we get to a fifth member.
And the attorney?
Well, I don't know.
If we can get it, I would definitely, you know, recommend that be tried to come.
MTA recommends it too because it's a difficult situation right now.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I hear you, I, you know.
That's why I called. And I talked to Catherine.
Okay. Alright, so you move to table it, Stan?
Yeah.
Alright, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Alright, um. So it's not a satisfying, it's not a satisfying result, but on the other hand. There's a possibility that it could be improved. And I don't see the legal justification.
Again, right?
Yeah, we would have another open, uh, another hearing at that point in time.
What's the next meeting again? Is there a date? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's what, May?
May sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Sixteen?
May sixteenth.
Right.
And, you know. Man, I, I'm, I am sympathetic, not that I'm not, it's just that I'm constrained here by the law. I think this gives you an opportunity to, in that period of time, look at that practical difficulty issue. And try to articulate. You know, how that is a practical difficulty and maybe even. Discuss whether there are other possibilities and, you know, whether or not they are feasible.
So we wouldn't feel as people. Wouldn't we?
Splitting again, it's not fusion.
I think so, well, I, 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 you know, simply saying that there's.
Cause it's a final.
Oh, got it.
So what is those criteria that she speaks of in order to do it? Where's that at, that I can read that there's a criteria that she has to have one of them in a motion? To grant.
Oh, the practical difficulty? Yeah, there's the zoning board of appeals handbook and there's plenty of guidance, I think you should probably be able to get it from the clerk.
One of those questions.
I, I don't. I don't know that, I don't know that they are. Um, but in, in any event, you could get the zoning board of appeals handbook, it's, I mean, you can find it online actually. Uh, and then there's material online that you could find also regarding uh practical difficulty. And, um. And um so hopefully that would be given enough to give you some guidance and then make the argument. Well, seeing as you, you, you're gonna have an opportunity to do that in May, is what I'm saying.
It's assuming that it works.
Well, we need to make sure, we need to make sure, so, so normally, normally there's an alternate that's also here. Okay, that alternate was not able to make it tonight. Well, Tom, Tom, the, the, the problem, the problem, Tom, is that, you know, this is kinda like best result you can get, because if we had a vote tonight, we're gonna be tied in that wouldn't, you know, wouldn't be approved.
Same type of situation for upholding codes and sterling rights. And codes, N F P A codes are written to the word, but you meet just like this with the board. Same exact situation, and everybody talks about it, and there's always will give and take. There's some understanding, we're building a building right now, it's a four-story uh high-rise. By the rule, they're supposed to have so much room on the one side for uh fire ambulances to get in there and the ladder trucks, so they can set their boom on. They didn't have enough room on that lot, we gave them a variance for that, even though it's not within the code, we let them do some different things along that fit that criteria, I mean, there's, there's always options. It's more written in the rule, but to make the project work, we come together.
I, I, Tom, I understand very
I know you're a lawyer, you should understand that very well.
I, I understand, I understand variances, look, we're not here to, to argue, I, I don't think this is gonna be
I don't understand, I don't understand how much this is affecting me, I mean, like, this is
I understand, I understand, but you know what? Again, you should have known, just so you know, you should have known the law. Tom, you should have known the law before you started. And what you're doing is you're coming to us and saying, please forgive me.
I didn't say sorry.
Well, you are, you're asking, you're asking for a variance. Public comments are done, we're, we're Yes, yes you was.
A motion to adjourn?
We'll take a motion to adjourn.
Sorry, you were, okay.
Your dad, I know him very well, your dad will be proud of you.